A lot of options that we'll talk about today for consideration. Really comes down to three essential options for us. To start with is a framework. One is to continue as is with no mask mandate. The second option is to implement a district-wide mask mandate pre-K-12. And the third option for consideration is really implementation of a mask mandate at the pre-K-6 level. The primary difference between those last two essentially being that pre-K-6 students are not typically able to receive the vaccine yet this time and most 7th through 12th graders are. For that clarification. Before I wrap things up and turn it back to Sandra for board conversation, the one thing I would ask as well is before we finalize things, just a plea to our community for respect and support for the decision of the school board after today's meeting. Whatever the decision is made, whether you disagree or agree with it, it's important as a school community that we really move forward in a positive manner. Everyone's doing the best they can to protect and educate our students. I ask for grace towards our teachers, principals, bus drivers, kitchen staff, all of our staff in our schools, doing the work that they can to serve our kids in very challenging situations. The current situation will not last forever, I don't think. We've made it through a... We've made it through a year and a half of challenges already. We've made it through a year and a half of challenges already. It's not been easy for anyone. I'm very confident we'll get through this phase as well. But just a plea to, as we move forward, just the importance of whether we agree or disagree, we act civilly and support our district as a whole. So with that, I'll hand it back to Sandra to lead the board conversation.
Okay. I think what we'll start with, we'll just work around, kind of around the table and have comments. If someone states something, if you have, if one of you other board members have a question about what they're saying, you can ask it. And I ask that we respect others' opinions as we are not all going to agree up here, which is part of why we're doing what we're doing. So, you know, we respect each other. I think with that, we'll begin over here. Barry, would you begin, please?
Happy to.
Thank you. Someone has to begin every time, so.
Well, and I guess where I'm going to start is, I don't, I'll just be right up front. I don't like the word mandate. I don't like anybody telling me what to do. I don't like the word mandate either way. I still feel that the decisions we're going to make are going to be short-term. I feel deep down in my heart that choice is still critical. And, you know, we can voice our opinion, we can give you statistics. Everybody read, everybody study. Just be careful what you're reading, what you're seeing. But our main objective, and it's been this way since this pandemic started, is we want to educate our children. That's what we're here for. That's what I'm here for. My kids are absolutely... I'm here because I believe and I love them in our school. I believe in the leadership. I believe in all of our teachers and students. But I really sincerely do not want to deputize my children. You know, and that's what scares me. If we're going to make people wear masks, then your ability, the principal's going to be parents that are going to say, "Nope, I won't do it." My kids are not going to wear masks. Other parents are going to say, "If they're not going to wear masks, my kids aren't going to go to school." But I hear, I'm still on the side in the same with vaccines. You know, if the kids have vaccines or should have, or their parents do. I'm a vaccine hater. I believe in vaccines, but I'm not going to force them. Other parents are going to say, "If they're not going to wear masks, my kids..." So with all of that said, but I don't, I'm still on the side in the same with vaccines. I don't, you know, if they're supposed to have the vaccines or should have, or their parents do. I'm a vaccine hater. Teachers should be put in there. But I'm not going to... slight struggles on our school buses. So with... Whose job is it to make us turn our voices loud? I'm still on the side in the same with vaccines. I don't... But I still, as we look at our numbers today, I don't want teachers to be put in there. The variant, the slight... All of the Delta variant is still coming at us. It's not as extreme as it was, which doesn't... If somebody passes away from it, that doesn't rationalization, doesn't help anything. And I don't like the idea of having to sit in lawsuits. And I don't like the idea of having somebody looking over my shoulder. And so with all of those pieces together, I still believe in personal choice and I still believe... And then the next piece of it is, and this came up at the board meeting again the other night, the mental illness of our children, the mental capabilities of our children. Students, staff, everybody, you know, because, you know, at my age last year, a couple times I was angry because I couldn't do what I wanted to do. And I'm so fortunate, I've got nine grandchildren. All nine of them weathered this. They're in different communities and they all weathered it well and it's kind of a way of life for them now. As my little four-year-old said, "I don't want to get the COVID," she said. And so, you know, we're all doing what we can do. We're all doing the best we can do. I'm just thrilled to death that school's going as well as it's going. You know, there are issues, there are challenges, and we know there are going to be more challenges. And like Shannon and Sandra just said, you know, we're not here to make people mad. That's not our role. And we don't want to make these decisions. This is my 10th year on the board and this has probably been one of the toughest years because all the decisions we were making were positive things. Where now we're having to go against half of the group or whatever it is and we don't want to do that. So we're going to make a democratic decision today and we're going to make a vote today. And we hope everybody's happy with it and we're not going to make it as a lifetime commitment. This is going to be something that we're going to revisit moving forward.
Okay, Tim?
I guess I had a few notes too. One was, I know that everyone on this board believes that in-person is what we want. We don't want to go back to online. We don't want to go back to one day on and off. And also, as we remind ourselves on our name plaques here that we want to do what's best for all students too. And as I've done some research on my own, listened to my fellow board members, the information from Shannon and looked at our COVID numbers and listened to our community members, you know, either in person or via email. I think at the end of the day, for me, while we listened, I think, while I listened, I think the best thing for us is not to do nothing, I guess. To do something, is my opinion. And that takes me to the PK-6 or the 7th through 12. And I'm definitely on board for PK-6. You know, especially since those kids can't be vaccinated. The 7th through 12 piece, I'm a little, I'm on the fence. You know, I'll say I'm on the fence there. I can see the positives and negatives. I can see that they can be vaccinated, so there's that. So I'd like to listen to see where the rest of the board is. And then the one piece is, when would we come back and check this again? And my thinking is, you know, I throw this out there for debate, would be around two months after vaccinations are available in Lynn County. Kind of see where that is. So that's kind of where I am as of right now.
Okay, thank you. Britt, would you like to comment?
Okay. Like Tim, I've listened. I've read every email that's come in this week. I've read every message that's been sent to me. I've listened to our lawyer with regards to the lawsuit. I've read every health recommendation from Lynn County Public Health to the CDC to the American Academy of Pediatrics. So I'm listening. I'm evaluating all of that information. And I agree with what Barry said and I agree with what Tim said, that this is not what we want to be talking about. This is not what we're focused, what we want to be focused on. But part of our responsibility is creating that safe environment for students to learn in and to create an environment in which we can keep them in schools as long as we can. I'm looking at the numbers going up. I am aware and I hear the people that say the survival rate for kids is super high and that's fantastic. But what happens when they get sick is that they miss 10 to 24 days of school. Best-case scenario. If it's worse, they have to be hospitalized or it takes longer and that's educational opportunities they're missing. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We want to keep our schools open. We don't want to repeat last year. We don't want hybrid again. We don't want virtual learning again. I've given a lot of thought to the fact that we were, not just that there was a lawsuit, but that we were named in that lawsuit. And that we were told we were not creating an equitable educational environment for our special needs students. And that we were violating the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a federal law that protects that class of individuals. That is a big deal to me, that we would be in violation of federal law. And the fact that we're having this conversation today is because a judge agreed that we are potentially violating that law. That's why the injunction was passed. So if we don't acknowledge that, I think we're doing a disservice. We're going to end up with more lawsuits, which is not fiscally responsible. You know what?
Everybody, please, give us time to talk, discuss, keep your thoughts to yourself. We would appreciate it.
Right now, we are being sued for violating the rights of students and not creating an education, a safe educational environment that provides them equal access to education. That is the lawsuit that we are currently being sued under. So I think we have to do something, just like Tim said. And I'm definitely on board with our students that cannot be vaccinated yet, protecting them. Those are where our numbers are going up the furthest. But one thing that we have been consistent about as a board over these 18 months, when we've reviewed the information and the guidance that we've been provided, we are not health experts. So for me, in reading everything, I don't think that we are in a position to apply the expert guidance from Lynn County Public Health, our local chapter that's saying Lynn County needs more. To go against that, to go against this, and pick and choose where we apply it. The recommendation from the health experts locally and nationwide is K-12, PK-12. I'm not in a position to disagree because I do not have a medical license. I do not study medicine. I didn't study science. I listen to the experts. So for me, I'm in favor 100% of bringing masks back PK-6. I am in favor of masks for 7th, 12th because there are families that have children across all those levels and it is our responsibility as a part of this community to do our part. The last thing I'll say is that our district may have low rates right now, but we have no ICU beds in our hospitals here in town. We have... The last data I was given two days ago said we had no ICU beds.
Hey, you know what? Enough. Hang on, hang on. Rachel, let me take care of it.
It's okay, Rachel.
Please? Enough. Everyone, I know you've got opinions. We've heard them. You need to listen. If you cannot do that, if you continue to talk during this time, you'll be asked to leave. That's the only way we can conduct this in a way that's a positive manner. Please. Back to Britt.
I'll just summarize with, I think that we should follow the health experts and take into consideration, we're being sued for violating a federal law. We're not health experts. We should be putting protections in place to keep all of our students and staff safe. I agree with Tim about having an end date for two months after when the vaccines are available to our youngest kids. We should revisit this and I would be open to that. And that is where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Rachel?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have been getting all the same emails and reading them all. I really appreciate people sharing their thoughts respectfully and there have been a lot of good points made. And I have spent the last few days really, really struggling with this decision and trying to talk to as many people as I can and get input from people who are, have more expertise in this than I do. And really hearing from both sides of the opinion, absolutely. And sharing articles with fellow board members from different perspectives and that because I really think that no matter where I come down on this, it's really important to understand where the other side is coming from before I can make a decision one way or the other. I appreciate your guys' comments. I share a lot of the same concerns as you, Britt. I am feeling a little out of my depth on this and feeling like the smartest thing to do is to follow the expert advice, both medically and legally. I know that there are concerns about what it means to have our kids masked during school and I do really appreciate those concerns, especially at the elementary level. You know, those things are things that I worry about too. I want a little, I want to hear from the rest of the board. I don't want to, I don't want to come down one way or the other just yet. I am leaning towards a mask mandate. I think PK-12, simply because if I'm going to follow the CDC guidelines, then, you know, I don't want to pick and choose. I want to be, you know what I mean? I want to at least be consistent in what I do. But I'm still certainly open to hearing other people's opinions.
Okay, thank you. Tara?
So first thing that I wanted to say was, I just want everybody to remember that each of us up here is a person and a parent and we are, everybody is doing the best that they can and everybody up here deserves respect, just like all of you deserve to be respected. I am the type of person that operates from the position that I think everybody is doing the best that they can with the tools that they've been given. That being said, I also read everybody's emails.
That being said, I also read everybody's emails. Well, I had to stop at like 12:15, but I got through everything that had been sent to me by that point. They're still coming in. My priority would be on an exit plan. I don't love any of this, but like Britt had said, we were, and Shannon had said, we were a named, the school district was a named defendant in this suit. It's not a matter of jumping on an opportunity that came across. In the TRO, we were a named defendant. One of our students was the plaintiff in the suit. The parent was a plaintiff in the suit. So we specifically have a responsibility, in my opinion, to act in reaction to a temporary restraining order. My personal opinion is that we should do what we can to protect the students whose parents do not yet have the option to have their students vaccinated. They don't, I have older children. I have that option for my students. Then we can make subsequent choices as a result of that. And there are a group of students and families in our community that have not yet had that opportunity because it has not yet been given to them. And so that in conjoined with the TRO from Monday, I'm currently in the position that I think PK through six is our best option for masks. But again, like having an exit plan in place. And I'm not saying have an exit plan in place, like we'll talk about it two months from now. Like we commit to what the exit plan is. Not that we will just revisit it and have a discussion about it then. My personal problem with the CDC recommendation is the open-endedness of it. So I've received messages that call for segregation of students. Guys, that makes me so sad. I can't abide by that. And my biggest concern honestly at the upper grade levels, like Barry had said about deputizing people, is enforcement. Like ultimately, our job is in education and we have to also take into consideration what would take away from that. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, some of me need to know that, I'm probably the oldest one here. These guys have heard this before, but it's significant because I've been in the district since 1974. As a teacher, as a coach, as a substitute teacher and as a board member. My son graduated from Lindmar. I know that we have board members that have children presently in the Lindmar district and grandkids in the Lindmar district. I took this job because I really do, after my retirement, believe in all students. That's why we're all here. That's our number one priority. And it's, no matter what we say today, we're going to upset some people and we're going to have support for some people. But after what we've been through and what we'll continue to go through until we get more people vaccinated, to reduce the number of these people that are in the hospitals. Our hospitals throughout the nation are 85% to 90% with unvaccinated people. Are you going to listen to me or are you going to have, are you going to have to be removed? That's the way it is. The president of the board already said that. Okay? Oh, nice verbal line, non-commitment there. Hey, excuse me, but I still believe in what our students are doing and what this board is doing. That's how I wouldn't even be here. I love the Lindmar district, okay? given two commencement addresses to Five Seasons Center. That was brought up because that's what the student wanted me to do. I've been grand marshal twice because of what the students wanted me to do. I do dearly love this district and love anything that the seven of us can do to educate our students. We've been through hell and back already so far in relationship to virtual learning and hybrid learning and in-class learning. And yes, there is the mental health issue. But I think if we come together, it's one of those things that we can help not only ourselves, our friends, our neighbors, but our students get through this in a mental health by supporting what is best for all of us. Okay? The decisions that we make will be what's in our hearts is what we think is best for our kids. They need to be educated. They've lost a lot through last year and it's no fault of their own. Okay? My 12-year-old granddaughter said, "Grandpa, I can't wait to get vaccinated." Okay? I mean, she just came up to me and just looked me in the face and said that. She said, "Okay, I'm glad to hear that." Yes, I am vaccinated. Yes, I'm old enough in two more months to get the booster shot.
I think you should leave the room if you can't respect his time. Can you stop?
Go ahead.
So as we look through this, trying to look at from 12-year-olds to high school, they have the opportunity to get vaccinated. The more we get vaccinated, I feel, the sooner we will reach, like Barry said, you know, basically this will be a short thing and we can get back to no masks, no vaccinations. We're back to school and that's where we should be. But we're going to have to do something because the numbers keep rising. Okay? Right now, I'm leaning through the pre-K six mandate simply because those little ones do not have the opportunity even get vaccinated. Okay? The seven, eight, through, seven, eight through 12 have the opportunity. They can. We don't have any data as to how many have done that, how many will do that. The Delta variant has spread through all 99 counties. Okay? And I don't want us to be another statistic. I want our kids to have the best opportunity to get educated. To be quite honest, in a district that I love very much. Okay? I know that we are not going to be able to please everybody. That saddens me. But when we vote, I do have to vote with all the students, the many, many, many thousands of students I've had that are now having kids. I went to some of their weddings. I've also went to some of their funerals. I know you're getting a lot more than what you expected out of me, but I've never given a short statement in my life. Ask any one of my athletes that's come to a banquet. My point is this. The love that this board has for students and doing the right thing and whatever vote comes down, it's done because we want to do what's best for their kids, your kids.
Okay.
I better stop, Rachel.
I was going to say, let's move on. I'm the last one to speak and certainly I cannot say anything better than many of my colleagues have. Our job is to educate. That's what we do. That's what I did for 40 years. I love kids. I love the interaction. I want them there. I want them at school. I want them to be able to do their best. And this is really difficult, all the way around. I mean, I've heard from many, many people, you know, past students. I've been vaccinated. Let me just be there. I don't want the beginning of my class to be, "You need to have a mask on." And I totally get all that. The older students, you know, can, can, I think, control this whole thing a whole lot better. I'm, I'm worried about the younger ones, pre-K through six. I think that we need to address for a short amount of time, hopefully, that maybe that we do something such as masking for those kids. I want them to be safe and I want all of us, you know, to be healthy. And it's very hard. It's not perfect. It's not great. And I think whatever motion we make and that, we need an exit plan attached to it so that this is not going on and on and on. We want to be able to, if that's what we do, that it's for as short a time as possible. Okay? At this point, I will stop and I will say, is there anyone that has anything else? Otherwise, I will defer to Shannon and he can add some information, I believe.
I just had a question about, so I threw out there, but maybe I didn't use that word exit plan, but two months after the vaccine was available. I don't know if you or Kara had thought about an exit plan or had an idea.
Similar, yeah. The period of time that it takes to administer and that it be effective. But, but it's important to me that we not set that timeframe at a time to revisit, but that's the exit plan.
All right, I see your point.
Madam President.
So that as we go into it, we know if that's the way we go, when we will go out.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I would agree with that, with the vaccine timeline that Tim has proposed and that. I can agree with a commitment to that. I would ask that if the numbers have substantially increased, that, you know, we would consider that as well. But committing to that exit at that time, I'm uncomfortable with that.
I guess I, I'm feeling a little just uncomfortable. I'm not really sure, you know, when we talk about an exit strategy, you know, we're committing to things without knowing exactly how things will play out, what the numbers would look like at that time. You know, I know Kara had said she doesn't want to return to discuss. She wants to have a clear exit plan. And I can really appreciate that. I can, I can appreciate that. I just, I don't, I struggle with the practicality of it a little bit.
Kara, can I ask a clarifying question for that? So when you said exit plan of two months or whatever it was said, that would be the plan that we would be proposing and going forward with, but it could always be revisited if circumstances change as well? Or are you thinking?
I don't know what circumstances.
I don't know either.
Who knows, right? Like I had no idea that we were even going to be sitting in these seats having this conversation 24 months ago, right? So we don't have any idea what the circumstances could change were. But like given the information I have right now, that's the only way that I can make a decision is with the information that we have right now. I can't, like, I'm not comfortable leaving it open-ended because of what if.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Okay, I have just a couple more things. You know, one thing is we don't really know the timeframe on the appeal process for this. That's something that we haven't talked about, that I think deserves some discussion. And then I think the other thing for me is more, perhaps maybe more philosophical, but I think scientific as well, which is that we have a duty, this board has a duty to students, yes. But what is our duty to community? First and foremost, we have to care about, you know, kids being out of school for 10 to 24 days or perhaps longer and all of that. But when we're in the middle of a pandemic, it's not just about what's happening to these children, but also what happens as a result of that? What impact that has on our community as a result? And so I feel like looking at this number, it doesn't give you, you know, full context when we're talking about this decision. And I think, I just, you know, I bring that up. I think that, you know, I'd like to hear other people's opinions on it, I guess.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, initially I was against masks entirely, but I'd like to make a motion to have a mask mandate, PK through sixth grade. And the reason for that is the vaccination opportunity. I wanted to put an ending date of 30 days on it, but I think to be realistic, I'd like to make an ending date of 60 days where we go back to no masks after that point.
You know, I would, can I say something for a second? Like with all due respect, Barry.
I have a motion.
Hold on a second. I would like to say something, please. With all due respect, I asked a question. I feel like you just, kind of just, you know.
I, I put, I, excuse me. I put a motion on the table.
Yes, you did. We need a second.
And I have a clarifying question.
Clarifying.
Are you saying 60 days from the point of vaccine availability?
That's correct.
Or 60 days from that?
60 days from the vaccine availability for that age group.
Okay. So that is our, that is our motion. Is there a second for that?
A second, so we can have a discussion.
Okay. So now we're in discussion about that motion and any clarifications we need.
I would like all of us to answer Rachel's question because I think that that's important.
I would like to be treated, I would like to be treated with as much respect on this board as the men are treated.
So Rachel, will you restate the question just so that we all understand exactly what you would like from us? And I don't mean that in any other way than it just will help everyone know.
I said, I would like to have a little discussion about, you know, what do we know in terms of a timeframe on appeal? Because if this is going to be appealed within the next week or two, it may be just entirely disruptive to have.
Okay, so can we start with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do it. Do we know, do we know anything? Have we heard anything about that?
I've been told it could be weeks before, a couple of weeks before it gets reviewed, which may or may not lead to it being overturned or not, or it could be longer than that. So the attorney was not able to pinpoint now what that could be because she was not sure of the federal court timeframe for when they would take action for that. The only real advice she gave on that is if you're waiting for a decision, she recommended not holding out on that delay because she just could not give a timeframe that she was confident in. Yep, I'd be glad to. Yeah, the attorney said it was two weeks would be the fastest we'd probably expect something. It could be longer than that. By several weeks, it could even go into several months. The only real advice she had for us on that topic was to, if we are holding off on a decision based on that potential appeal being overturned, she recommended we not hold off on that because she was not confident in the timeline that she'd be looking at. She just didn't have a good enough feel of what that would be.
Does that, does that help, you told? Is there any? Okay. What is the other part of your question that you have? Because I think it's important that we answer all of it. I just thought one part of the time would probably be better. And I apologize for making you restate, but I think that's the best way for us to get to what it is you would like more information about.
I said, I wonder if we should discuss our duty to the community as a school board in addition to our duty to these particular 106 students and then the other, you know, 700, 7800. But what impacts them? But what impacts them impacts our community. So, I, you know, I think that should be a part of the discussion.
So, does anyone have anything to say about that?
Well, I think that Clerk made a good point about hospital capacity. I think Lynn County Public Health has made it clear what the public health directive and recommendation is, and that is our local board making that recommendation. That is not a national board that is people question. That is our local experts. They have recommended, made recommendations, and they are very concerned about the rate of increased positivity in Lynn County. So, I think that we have a responsibility to consider that and what spread or increase in positivity in our district can add to the countywide impact. That would be my consideration of the community.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to add something?
Why don't you give some of the community how it's been? Sorry.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has something to say? If not, we have a motion on, to be voted on.
I just have one more question, for sure. From the legal standpoint, when we talked, you said that the lawyer recommended that the best action would be PK 12, but then we would have some cover if we just did PK six. Is that accurate? Like, what was the lawyer's recommendation?
Our attorney said that based on the lawsuit that we are named part of and the overturning of the injunction essentially, that a pre-K 12 mask mandate would have the most legal protection possible because it's all of our students. She did say if we did a pre-K six mask mandate, that would essentially meet our personal situation because of the age of the student that was part of the litigation was under that pre-K six umbrella. So, she said that would still meet our legal obligation this time. That there's always legal risk on either side, so there's always a potential risk of lawsuit coming whether you approach the full PK 12 or the PK six or nothing at all. But she felt confident PK six would meet our initial legal responsibility there.
Okay. Yes, Dan?
We have to say a date that this would go into effect or we just, that would be you to put that in?
That was one question I was going to ask, is my recommendation is we do not want to do something with very short notice. If this motion does pass, my recommendation would be to have it be effective on Monday. It would give us adequate time to communicate with staff, students, families, have time to prepare accordingly.
So, you want to add that to the motion?
Do you want to add that to the motion?
Effective Monday, September 20.
20.
Yeah. Okay, so you seconded that.
I did have a couple questions.
Yes, what are your questions? Will we vote?
How do, how do you intend, this question's for you, Shannon, if it makes a difference? How, assuming if the motion were to pass, what does it look like for open enrollment and online? If we're talking about students that are online currently because we do not require masks in schools that would want to come back in buildings and vice versa, as well as we're past the open enrollment deadline for the school year, if somebody was to want to open enroll out or into, right? Because area schools are not all doing the same thing. So, that's one question. I have like two more.
I'll take the first one first, so I don't forget. We understand that this is a situation that not everybody's going to like whatever decision we make. So, our intent coming to this was we would work with families to, if they wanted to move to a homeschool program, online program, or potentially open enrollment, we would work with them on those options as well. Even though it's after the deadline, we would be flexible, work with individuals because the situation has changed. So, we would be flexible with folks and make that happen. Our intent is not to be difficult or to fight folks on what their request may be.
And then, some of the other parents that we had heard from were children who have children that they feel are impacted in a negative way by wearing a mask. And I'm speaking like purely medically. And so, I'm wondering if it is the intention of the board to allow for physician-written medical exemptions. So, for example, we heard from a parent who has a student with asthma that's exacerbated by it. We heard from a parent who has a student who's hard of hearing and has a hard time understanding on what's being said around them when faces are covered. And so, my next question is like, I am in favor of following the TRO because it's important that all of our students have the ability to learn in person in our buildings, but that doesn't look the same for all of our students. And so, what can we do, do our very best to help all students?
Medical waivers would be available as well if they're signed by physicians to support that need for the individual students, will be taken on a case-by-case basis as well.
And then, we also have heard considerably about disruption. I'm going to be honest, that's a big reason that I'm not wanting to have it with the upper grade levels is just purely from a disruption of learning standpoint. And that makes me really sad that that's where our community is at right now. It makes me very sad that the lack of respect for each other is there. Because even though we're in a position right now where it's parent choice, the choices on both directions are not being respected in our buildings the way that they could and should be. So, if you can like speak a little bit to like what the plan is to help mitigate disruption and all of that, I would appreciate it and enforcement, I guess, at the younger buildings.
It'd be, I guess it'd be very similar to the way they looked at last year, that masks, if the board directs that and that is what we end up approving, that would become our school rule, so they would be enforced and students would have normal disciplinary procedures if they are not following those to wear the masks while they're in the school setting. And we would work with the individual and with the family to make sure that happens. Try to be as fair as possible and give an ethical warning, but eventually it goes down to it has to be done if that's the adopted board practice for it.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, concerns?
No, but if this is, if this is going for a vote, I just want to say beforehand that I'm going, if we're doing the PK six, I'm not going to vote for it. I will support it 100%. I just think that it just feels like we either do it or we don't do it. And I wish we didn't have to do it, but in my opinion, we just lack other mitigation tools like testing and things like that. We don't have those things at our disposal. So, I'll just say that.
Normally, I would agree with Rachel. I mean, I do agree that I think it should be all or nothing. As I said, I don't believe that we have the expert knowledge to pick and choose where we apply the recommendations and where we don't. However, I think it's important, unless other board members are feeling the same way as Rachel and are also going to vote no, I want it to pass and I want, I want there to be support for wherever we can protect the students. So, I will vote for it, but it's not everything that I think we need to protect our students, our staff, and our, and meeting the legal requirements of the lawsuit that we are currently facing.
Okay. Is there anyone else's statement? Otherwise, we need a roll call, vote please. Can you do so?
Ball.
Yes.
Or no?
Peter.
Yes.
Buckholz.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Ori.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes. The motion has been carried.
I'll move to adjourn the special session at 1:55 PM.
That's right now. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Here's...